Ladies and gentlemen, please stand in American State Council.
Thank you and good evening everyone. I'll call on General Manager to say the council prayer.
Almighty God, we humbly beseech thee to baptize thy blessing upon this council, direct in prosperous deliberations to the advancement of thy glory and the true welfare of the people of the city of Clarence. Amen.
Before proceeding, I'd like to advise that this council meeting will be recorded, audio visually and be available on the council website. And I'd also like to take the opportunity to recognise the Tasmanian Aboriginal community as the original custodians of the land on which we're meeting tonight and pay respects to all those present. The meeting is open. We have apologies from Alderman Von Berta. Actually, she's on approved leave. Item two, confirmation of minutes, 7th of November and a special council meeting on the 21st of November. Thank you, Alderman Chong, second to Alderman Cusick, all those in favour. Carried unanimously. Mayor's communication, just advised that this morning, the steering group for the modeling for Gota Hobart, held a steering group meeting and considered a draft report into the amalgamation for Gota Hobart council. We have received some questions from our general manager and I expect the final report to be tabled before the end of this year. We'll keep all of them informed in regard to that. And as foreshadowed at a workshop, SERTA has provided commentary in regard to the redistribution committee for the electoral boundaries in Tasmania. It attempted to do so as a submission but due to email problems, it ended up being commentary on the submissions provided, but I'll table that in circular address as well. And finally, under Mayor's communication, this, we had planned this as the last council meeting for the year, but we will have to convene for another one on the 19th of December to deal with outstanding planning issues. So there will be one more council meeting. Item four, council notes the workshops conducted on the 14th, 21st and 28th of November and the agenda brief on the 2nd of December. Thank you, Alderman Fairley, Alderman Chong. All those in favour? Carried unanimously. Item five, declarations of interest of Alderman or close associate. Alderman Dowdson.
We're interested in 11.3.2.
Are there any other? Item six, tabling of petitions, General Manager.
Mr Mayor, I have a petition received from 48 signatories requesting council to accept the recommendation of the Lord Dale Urban Expansion feasibility study 2016. At this stage, because of the amount of fill required, the 30,000 truck movements, the impact storm water will have on the area, oversupply of residential lots and noise and dust during construction. I'll table that, reported on at such a meeting.
Are there any other petitions from the four? Thank you. Public question time, item seven, there are no matters on notion, on notice. Item 7.4, are there any questions from the public without notice? Thank you. Item eight, deputations by members of the public, General Manager.
Mr Mayor, we have three speakers this evening. The first speaker is Prue Allen of Cambridge, who wishes to address council in relation to the Cambridge master plan. If she can come forward, please.
I'll take this opportunity to remind all speakers that under our meeting rules there's only three minutes available, but there'll be a tone at two and a half minutes give you a chance to wind up. Thank you.
My name is Prue Allen and I'm a proud parent and member of the school association at Cambridge Primary School. I've come here tonight to plead for your pleas ask for more time and consultation on the Cambridge master plan. I gave up a lot of my weekends to prepare for this meeting and I've had to take the night of work tonight to be here, but with such short notice, but given how strongly we feel as a school community, I think it's important. Cambridge Primary is an outstanding school, we have a wonderfully supportive community. Evidence of this could be seen at our recent fair where we raised close to $21,000. We wouldn't be the school that we are and have the reputation we do without the community of parents, friends and residents, and these are the people who voted all of you onto the council. We as a school give back to the community in many ways. We've recently planted trees around the creek area, children use our playground on weekends because we don't have a park in the area. We're even hosting the current city council jazz festival event early next year to encourage the community to be a part of our school. There is nothing more important to us than child safety. The tracks that are proposed in the plan are far too close to our school. One path in particular runs along the fence near our youngest, most vulnerable kindergarten students. To encourage the public access so close to the school tends ludicrous and I question why public walkways would take precedence over child safety. It was suggested that we could continue the wire fence from the basketball court, but that would be like caging the school in rather than taking advantage of the open bush environment nearby. We are all for people being able to enjoy our beautiful bush around the school, but please not right near our kinder area. With a great reputation comes more growth and part of the attraction to the incredibly popular new subdivisions is children being in area and therefore able to attend our school. I ask how it was possible for the council to have approved all these new subdivisions with new houses being built daily without proper consultation with the school and Department of Education on how we could cope with such an influx of new people. Our plan was to expand the school, continuing along the rivulet and sympathetic ways of the environment and creating a nice flow to keep the school together. To have the campus spread over a vast area would be quite detrimental in my opinion. It has been suggested that instead of flowing along the creek, the rivulet could be covered in a similar way to Kangaroo Bay Eastlands, which just screams concrete monstrosity to me and goes against every aspect of promoting nature and the walks this plan proposes. This is also dependent on the current owners of the land allowing it to be used for this purpose. The biggest issue with all of this has been communication and engagement. Several Alderman came to speak with me at school to understand our concerns firsthand and on sight and I felt this was a really positive experience. I also felt the people that attended were happy to discuss the matter further. I felt that I had been respectful and it was just part of the process. We all feel development of this area is an incredibly positive thing for Cambridge and we want to work with you. If you vote for this plan to go ahead tonight, we have basically been shut down and ignored. If we stop at this point, there has been no further engagement with school and no consideration of our concerns and ideas. Please, please, can I just ask that you further engage the school association with the school itself, the Department of Education to work on a plan where everyone wins. This is not impossible, it's not even difficult and at the moment, all I can see is the council not taking on board the reasonable request of its rate payers to further actively engage in consultation to make our school and community a better place.
Next speaker, Mr Mayor, is Philip Barker of Cadena Road, Cambridge, who wishes to address council in relation to the public open space proposed for lot one, or one lot subdivision of 1B Cadena Road.
Good evening Mayor, Alderman. I'm Dr Philip Barker of 1B Cadena Road. I'm an expert ecologist and have 25 years in facilitating development. My wife and I have applied to create a one lot subdivision including 20 hectares and 100 hectare balance of our house exists on. Land in its own environmental living. Nearly 90% of our land is protected under conservation covenants under state and Commonwealth government administration. They are called Breakneck Hill Forest Reserve and Virilla Creek Forest Reserve. We receive no payment for this, this land is protected in the public interest. We urge you to reject the decision to refuse our application because it doesn't include POS recycle path on three grounds. One, poor advice from council planners. Under AVNC here, the scheme, POS is not compatible with the purpose of the zone for a one lot subdivision. Existing natural landscape values are to be retained, the POS doesn't do that. Protection of our privacy and seclusion of the residents, the POS offends that. Minimize impacts on priority vegetation, the POS track is proposed to go right through threatened vegetation communities. Our proposal is entirely compatible and avoids any disturbance of covenant or priority beds. The POS proposal is contrary to all of these purposes. Please re-familiarise yourself with the POS policy and the tracks and trails strategy. This proposal, the POS proposal offends those. In particular, it is not consistent with the crime prevention through environmental design principles, the POS is low and it is concerned. With the strategy, in particular, the strategy states the trail should have the potential support of the landowner and the manager and it does not. We had no consultation, zero. Due diligence is the second point. Councilor and planners had no idea of the viability of the track route before seeking it for POS. The planners have reported to you that we did not allow site access. The truth is we initiated discussion and invited them to extend the statutory assessment period so that they can inspect and determine the viability of the proposal. Council NRM officer and a surveyor inspected the land. They reported to the planners and them to us that the land was not fit for purpose due to being too steep and having very high conservation value. The planners have failed to tell you this and indicated the contrary position and you may wonder why that is. Authorization is required by both governments to change the covenant. We have received advice from the state government that our proposal is likely to be supported. The planners have received advice from the state government that clearly indicated the POS proposal is not compatible and is unlikely to be supported. This would jeopardise our proposal. Why didn't they provide this information to you in their decision? We conclude that the advice is wrong, incomplete and misleading. The POS proposal is inconsistent with the zone, inconsistent with the policy, inconsistent with the trail strategy, there's an unviable site and the decision presented to you is not in accordance with accepted standards and rules.
Next speaker, Mr Mayor, is Anne Boxall of Seven Mile Beach Road, who wishes to address council in relation to the subdivision or development proposal of 25 Seabrook Street, Seven Mile Beach.
Thanks for the opportunity to speak and thanks to the councillors who came down to visit the site, I appreciated that, and others who gave their time on the phone. It did feel reassuring that we'd been heard and I was also reassured when several councillors agreed that if you were in my shoes, you would be as concerned as I am. So thank you for that. Very quickly, my background, I came to Clarence from the other side 25 years ago. I've lived at 18 Seven Mile Beach Road for that 25 years. I came for the lifestyle and the village, it's now more of a suburb, another issue, but I have observed the creek right outside my house for 25 years and I like to think I'm slightly something of an expert because I see it every day, I watch it flood and I watch it when there's no water in it at all. I'd like to highlight just a couple of points very quickly. You'll be aware that the proponent proposes fill works and I would suggest that in combination with the significant fill works that have already happened across Acton Creek on the Toronto pasture land, they combine to create a greatly increased risk to properties on the eastern side of the creek like myself and my neighbours. That particular piece of land was a vast flood plain, I have seen the water spread across it on flooding occasions. Now it cannot, it is a metre higher than it used to be, so the water will clearly come the other way. There are implications here with the two developments obviously increasing the risk. That will be exacerbated when 46 pillars are erected on that site as well, different issue I realise. Second point, the inundation's risk management plan is based on the most available climate data and modelling, but the fact is we don't know, we don't have hard facts, everything is based on assumptions. I don't think we need experts to tell us that water will go to the lower point, the lowest point. And in this case, it could well be the adjoining properties to 25 Seabrook Street where the application refers to. We know just by looking at flood events in the north of Tasmania and across Australia, the unexpected happens. There really have been major failures in climate change modelling and predictions when you look at the inundation that's occurred across the eastern side of Australia. Oh my goodness. The proposal, I'll just leave that, I think, I guess we have a question, my neighbour and I have a question as to why there's been such a focus on minimising the risk of inundation to one property, being 25 Seabrook Street, and in fact, not to other properties who are effectively, their risk is effectively increased by what's proposed. This is a discretionary development and we urge you to exercise that discretion because this proposal does not meet the acceptable solutions under the scheme. In the matter of inundation, it's non-compliant as shown in the report. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms Boxall. No more speakers, Mr Mayor. Thank you. Item nine, motions on notice, Alderman Walker.
Question.
Do we have a second, please? Alderman James, thank you.
Yes, look, just from the outset, I want to state that this isn't a Seinfeld motion. A Seinfeld motion is a motion about nothing. I will discuss the substance shortly, but as far as, if you exclude officers' time, this motion really only has the commitment of, there is no ongoing cost commitment if this motion is approved tonight. We're not agreeing to do anything other than start engaging in discussions. So, all of us, I think, have felt deflated about the state of some of the highways and dare I say roundabouts in this municipality from time to time, throughout our time on council and perhaps as we contested going into it, we've all been admonished or at least told in no certain terms that the council's handling of these areas hasn't been up to speed and that's what we normally explain, it's out of our jurisdiction and management. And I think all of us over time have raised our concerns with the likes of staff and the general manager, perhaps the mayor, and asked is there something we can go forward about? I think we've all probably raised it with state and federal representatives. So, there is a reason why I've listed it this time. And the fact of the matter is that of all the corridors leading into the city of Hobart, this is, I would state, probably the most important one to be in a better state of presentation than it is at the moment. Hobart Airport is indeed the major gateway into the state. It's receiving over 2 million passengers a year and it's going to go up to over four in the space of a bit under 20 years. We know that major infrastructure upgrades are occurring at the airport, including the runway extension. And the corridor that we're talking about is from basically that airport and we are going to see some upgrades to the roundabout just outside the airport, pretty much right through to the Tasman Bridge. And we think about the new works that have been done there and how much that has improved the life for residents and people going through that area. And we look at the state of it and it does look currently like a bit of a bomb site. So, when we think also about maintenance, I drove the length of the East Irwin Highway today and part of it was actually in pretty good condition and that is the section that is under maintenance and controlled by the Brighton Council. So they've come to an arrangement and that has done better as far as the presentation is concerned. And I believe that because this is such a key corridor for people coming to the state for commerce, for growth, for tourism, it should be better. By having a discussion with state growth, who I think are probably of the mind that they need to do better around there, we can explore options and that may be our involvement to some level or to all of the level or something in between, but also perhaps having a think about what that road corridor should look like as the major gateway into the city. So I commend and seek your support.
Thanks. Thank you, Mr Mayor. The crux of the motion is that the council liaises with the Department of State Growth to investigate, to investigate options to improve and maintain the approach. There's no commitment whatsoever in the motion and Alderman Walker has made that comment quite clear in his introduction. And that is that it's merely a case of investigating the options and determining as to whether or not there is a part that Clarence can play and being the local planning authority or the council within the jurisdiction of the Hobart Airport, then I believe we have the strongest intention of trying to be able to maintain and perhaps input to the department that there is a necessity for general maintenance upkeep of the highway as has been mentioned as part of the gateway to the city. So the motion is not stipulating any funding at this stage. If it gets down to the nitty gritty, then of course council doesn't and is not obliged in any manner, shape or form in this particular motion to be committed. And even then, it would have to come back to council, Mr Mayor, if there was any intention and that would have to be considered by council in the fullness of time. So, seek council's support to at least initiate discussions, to investigate options of how we can improve and maintain that beautiful section of the highway. And of course, being the local council, then I think we have the best means by which we can in fact make suggestions in how that could be improved.
Mr Mayor, I wanted to question about two, three years ago regarding the same thing to investigate why we couldn't get a direct contract to do this ourselves instead of going through the state government and all this sort of stuff. Because it is a federal government highway and they give it to the state government. And the only time essentially done and like everybody are saying, you really should look smid now and that was because the Chinese premier came out and everything's been a mishmash job, it's not done properly. So Hobart City Council has apparently, I was talking to some of the Alderman there, taken over from the state government to service the local highway. And if you go from the railway roundabout up that way, it always looks very nice, smid. I can't see why we can't do the same thing, so I support the idea that we like that and I think we want to go a bit further in this almost demand because, you know, people come to us as Alderman and say, you are in Clarence, this is your patch, it's disgusting. It's the entry to the main city for the whole of the state of Tasmania and it looks like a big weed patch and it is half the time. Yet we can't do anything because the state government, for whatever reason, sort of going to sleep as a wheel and we're getting nowhere with it. And this has been going on for years, so I think we should be a bit more forceful. I support the motion to liaise with, I think it's a sub term really, I support the motion.
Thank you. Other speakers, Alderman Fairley.
Mr Mayor, when I first came to council, one of the reasons I wanted to be elected onto council was about beautifying Clarence. Because a lot of people came to me and said some of the highways, which aren't under our control, were quite untidy, particularly the East Irwin Highway and this particular stretch. I have raised that with council and through you, Mr Mayor, I asked the general manager the latest correspondence from Department of State Growth because this has been an ongoing area and they are already being put upon to actually come back to us with an answer in relation to all this. So the only query I have with this motion is the purpose of it because I understood that this was already under control and that we were putting it to the Department of State Growth as a general policy rather than one specific piece of highway. But I fully support this motion if it's actually going to provide impetus for that. So can I ask that?
I do note in the general manager's comments that discussions that previously were taking place have stalled because of staff turnovers, so it probably is time to start the liaison going again.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other speakers, Alderman Campbell?
I remember a previous mayor that lived at Richmond talking about the section of road. But I have been impressed with the state government and its contractors who are doing the new roadworks on Rugby Road, Southam Highway. So since that highway has been in place, there has been a regular contractor doing the mowing and spraying for weeds because they're not planting in the centre lane anymore, given up on that. But they do have gardeners from the shoreline roundabout back to Mornington roundabout with a beautiful row of pink flowering native bushes. Years ago, there was a school project on beautification of that area that looked into native grasses and I think that I agree with the motion and with Alderman Dowd's comments that sometimes we can just be just a little bit too nice and maybe we should not just wait for them to do it, but provide them with professional natural asset advice on what we would like to see done rather than waiting for them to do it. Because as we know, both the federal government and the state government are also busy with a whole lot of other topics. But if they were to then use a contractor that would liaise with us as it's in our council jurisdiction, that we would have a better input into our long-term management plan.
The other aspect too is that coming off the Tasman Bridge near Rose Bay High, further down, almost to East Scansia, look, sometimes that is moed, it looks good and then it's discreet and it looks an absolute disgrace. So I totally agree with the motion, I think we've got to get something done, so the place does look a lot like other states when you leave in the airport, it does look good and that's what we want in this city.
Other speakers. Right of reply, Alderman Walker.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Look, I appreciate some of the commentary around the table, I understand your frustration through you, Mr Mayor, Alderman Dowd's frustration. This is about, not trying to strong arm, this is about trying to problem solve, this is about trying to facilitate things moving on. So, it's also, the reason this has come forward is that this is actually now on the public record that we want to do this. So, it's not just us talking around the table and speaking to the general manager and phone calls between departments, this is a matter of public record and your Churchillian speech, Alderman Dowd, through you, Mr Mayor, will be on YouTube for generations to enjoy in the future as to how the town micro came to improve. The Tasman Highway rather, I've chosen again this site rather than anywhere else because of the potential and to leverage around its importance as a tourism gateway and a commerce gateway into the city. And that's, that's why, you know, I'd love East Irwin Highway to be in a better state as well, but at the moment, I think it's one thing at a time and let's see how we go with this as a pilot project.
Motion before the Chair is Alderman Walker's suggestion, motion that we liaise with the state government on the Tasman Highway. All those in favour? Carried unanimously. Item 10, is 10.1, reports from single and joint authorities. Southern Tasmania Council's authority that quarterly report is September is still outstanding. There is a board meeting next Monday and we'll provide the minutes in due course. Coping refused spokesman site, John Authority, Alderman Campbell.
Yes, the reports are attached in the room in due discussion.
Some waste trade authority, Alderman James.
Mr Mayor, I spoke with the systems that's been required, that has been provided to Swazza in the event of our winding up of Swazza. And I saw the copy of the income and expenditure for the quarter ending September 2016. That was sent to me today, I left it in my office. So look, obviously I'm able to table it tonight, but I really would like to see leave of the council as to whether or not the need to submit the ongoing outgoing and, well, there's not much income coming in because of the high income.
I think the council would be interested in the wind-up report, Alderman James, so I suspect if you're able to give us a timeframe for that. Thanks. Tasman Water Corporation, there's quarterly report to the 30th of September to the owner's representative group, the motion is that it be received. Alderman Cusick, thanks, Alderman Chong. Any questions on the quarterly report for Taswater? Okay, so put the motion, all those in favour. Carried unanimously. Reports from council and special committees and other representative bodies. Alderman Hearn.
Mayor, I have board of management's meeting minutes for Business East. For a meeting in
For a meeting in August and November, and there were a couple of meetings in between, but I'm still trying to locate the minutes for those, so I'll table them in a future meeting.
Alderman Ferrell.
I have the monthly minutes for the 9th of November for the Bellwether Community Arts Centre.
Alderman Carter.
I'm on the big table. Manual report, AGM and newsletter.
Further reports, thank you. Item 11, reports from officers that the information in the reports for the 7th, 14th, 21st and 28th of November be noted. Thank you, Alderman Chong, second up. Alderman Cusick, thank you. Alderman James.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I refer to the weekly briefing report of the 21st of November, and firstly to the draft Richmond Recreation Reserve Activity Plan on page 14. On page, or on the attachment two, which is the Richmond Disk Golf Course, my question through you to the appropriate officer, is there any wriggle room provided for in that course layout that has been circulated to the community? Because at the moment, there is a, there are a number of members of the public that have concern about proximity of the actual orange bins being located so close, Mr. Mayor, to the adjoining properties. So is the layout plan set in concrete, or is there room to manoeuvre, given that it's out for public consultation? The actual plan. Second question is in relation to notice of intention to remove properties from the Tasman Heritage Register on page 92. My question through you to Mr. Lovell in his capacity as the manager, city planning. Mr. Lovell, on your memorandum of the 21st of November, you say, and I quote, "All 12 places are listed in the historic heritage code of the Clarence interim planning scheme of 2015, and would remain so", unquote. Given that the Tasman Heritage Commission, Heritage Council, I think it is, has decided to sort of deregister these 12 properties, what clout does council have in determining any sort of changes or any improvements to those properties, given that the THC has basically withdrawn its support and deregistered those from their register?
Mr. Mayor, it actually doesn't change council's standing, we'd like to hear those problems, because the council is required to consider the heritage changes. It's a set reduction in properties, and that's because they tend to focus on doing the state's business. In this case, we didn't talk about the significance, which remained, which checked out by the survey. The same statements will be made when our business, I encourage, to remain in this.
Now, if it does, the matter goes to the tribunal. Is it, will it be conceived, and I know we're just looking at, poking in the dark here, but is it conceived that the tribunal may say, well, look, it's no longer on the Tasman Heritage Council register, so therefore the council's code doesn't have any sort of bearing in relation to what is the findings of the THC and what the council may desire to impose upon a condition?
No, the, there'll be no narrowing on the decision as a result of this change.
May well be that council needs to review its heritage register as a result of these decisions, and that's something we can consider in the new year.
I have a three question to that topic.
Sure.
In reading that information, I did inquire as to how assessments are made. I think you might be interested to know that the State Heritage Council makes assessments from the road, and there's no interim assessment done. And my question too would be then, were the owners involved in it, and to what degree did they participate in that deregistering? Because when I was looking at the positions of them in the listing, I found that to me, some of them were prime examples of heritage character, particularly within the Bowery Bluff area. And the only changes or any difference that I could see was the fact that they'd been given a coat of paint and somebody planted white roses. So for me, I failed to comprehend how they could be delisted when technically they were living in a street with a large number of other character housing. So I think if we are going to look at our own heritage listing, we want to be a little bit more unique in our approach.
Any other speakers in regard to the weekly briefing reports? In that case, the motion is that we receive the four for the 7th, 14th, 21st and 28th. All those in favour? Carried unanimously, thank you. Item 11.2, determinations of petitions tabled at previous council meetings, there are none, so I advise that council now intends to sit as a planning authority under the Land Use Planning and Approvals Act. First item is 11.3.1, a development application at 22 Pipe Clay, Eston Bernard, for demolition of existing carport and a new garage. Alderman Campbell, second, Alderman Pierce. Wish to speak to it, Alderman Pierce? Any speakers? Put the motion then, all those in favour? Carried unanimously. 11.3.2, Alderman Dow's, did you wish to? 11.3.2 is a subdivision application at 1V Cadenia Road, Cambridge for a one lot subdivision. Alderman Farland.
I'd like to support the officer's recommendation, A.
Thank you, do we have a second please? Alderman Cusick, thank you, would you like to speak to us?
The report is fairly extensive in the comprehension and explanation of the two lot subdivision. I think Alderman might need to know that when we're looking at public open space within the subdivision, whether it's a small lot or a large.
A point of order, oh, question actually, did you only move part A, or did you move the entire officer's recommendation?
Oh, sorry, well, no, the whole, yeah, I've highlighted A, that's all.
So you are moving the officer's recommendation?
The officer's recommendation.
Thank you, and you have a second to think of it? Thank you, Alderman Farland, please continue.
My apologies. So there's a number of issues, of course, within this when people might be looking at the report, and the comprehension is of, for instance, how a one lot subdivision of 20 hectares can create public open space for the greater community. Within the context of this area, there has been long-term strategic planning within the tracks and trails area for looking at access for passive recreation across the community in many areas. One of them is the Rugby Hour Hills, and this is another prime area for mountain bike riding and just general passive road riding, although I think there's a bit of racing going on in that area. So we use our public open space policy to address those needs. Within the allocation, the public open space allocation is taken on the whole of the land, which is 120 hectares. And the report clearly states that council can ask for a 5% allocation under any subdivision, whether it's one lot or more. Within the context of this subdivision, it equals 2.5% of the public open space allowable to be allocated. And so therefore, there's no need for any access within that 30 meter wide strip that was called for, for payments being required. This subdivision went to the Tracks and Trails Committee on the 13th of October 2016, and was supported by the committee after discussion. It has the strategic ability to feed through from the mountain bike park in the future to the Bormay Trail that we have all talked about as another vision to have up the Colby River Valley. There is a section approved along, behind Holliman Drive, along the creek in that area from a previous subdivision, and again within the current Cambridge Master Plan. Again, this idea that long-term strategic plan looks at linking the mountains to the sea. And if we look at the future strategic planning for this area, when the road connection from Richmond Road to the Holliman Drive roundabout is done, it will create a village effect to the Cambridge area that we've got now. And we have seen in the past a number of approaches for further subdivision on the bottom line of Cambridge Trail. The track that would be envisaged would be a class three track, so it's not a multi-use trail. However, tonight's discussion is purely about the need for rezoning. The rezoning is looking at.
It's a subdivision application, not a rezoning.
I'm talking to the rezoning first. The subdivision application for me, and what happens in that planning section of it, is subsequent to the agreement on the rezoning. So if the public open space is approved, planning for anything.
There's no question of rezoning here, Alderman Farland, I do need to make that point, that we are dealing purely with a subdivision.
Within the DA, the land asked for as public open space would need to be rezoned into public open.
Doesn't. No, the public open space.
From environmental, maybe, public open space.
Even though it's going to be designated public open space, it doesn't need to be rezoned as such.
That's not what I was told by another organisation, to do with the covenant. So that's something we can sort out later.
That's the advice from a planner anyway, so any decision we make tonight as a council has to be on that understanding.
Okay, that's fine, we will sort that one later. In relation to the area proposed as public open space, the report states on page 72 that the indicative track would be a class three style, not a multi-use trail, which incorporates a fair degree of width and long-term management. I believe that this strategic application and the public open space requirement thought vindicates council's long-term strategic plan for passive recreation across Clarence and links to a number of our strategic policy directions. I think you'll support.
Alderman Cusick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I support the officer's recommendation. Mr. Barker stated earlier that much of his land is already protected, because I understand, and Mr. Lovell might confirm this from discussion with Mr. Lovell, that this is not available for public access, the protected land. And what council are looking for is the public open space, and one suggestion is a walk-in trail along the Barilla Ripulet. Walk-in trail in this location would reduce potential conflict from vehicles, pedestrians, cyclists and Cambridge Road and Richmond Road. Now, I know 5% of the 120 hectares is obviously six hectares, and I don't know what component that walk-in trail would take up, but I support the officer's recommendation that public open space ought to be absolutely mandatory, just to get proved.
Other speakers? Alderman Walker or Alderman James?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I listened very carefully to Dr. Barker tonight and noted his concerns, and I've also read on attachment three, a dissertation on some of the comments that's been made in relation to this. I think that council, and from my reading of it, there has been consultation to the extent that the council has always conveyed its intention of initiating or determining where a trail, track ought to go in order to complete the strategy for the greater of the city. In this particular case, there is, there are covenants on the majority of the land in question, and the section of land that council has identified as being the most appropriate track, trail, that would link with the Cambridge Master Plan, and also to with the mountain bike park at Mornington into the Millen Range, and also hopefully in the longer term, council's access to Rocky Tom, Caves Hill into Riston Bay. That has always been council's intention, and it's been documented, it's been conveyed ad infinitum over the years. And it is awkward when council has actually stipulated a section of land that it needs to sort of align with its current strategies, and then the sort of concern that's expressed by the, by an applicant can start to raise questions as to whether or not council can or cannot do what it's proposing. The council can either decide to take cash in lieu, or take a track of land to meet its requirements for its tracks and trails and its policies within the city. And I believe that council is doing everything possible, and in accordance with its policies and its strategies, or tracks and trail strategy, to achieve that end. So look, I support the actual recommendation. I listened very carefully to Dr. Barker's comments, and also too, I read in detail his submission. But for the interests of the community at large and/or what has been telegraphed to the community over the years about the missing link in this particular case, I think it's fair and reasonable for council to take this course of action. If it goes to the next step, Mr. Mayor, to mediation, then there may be an opportunity for there to be some discretion exercised at that particular mediation opportunity. But at the moment, council, I believe, is doing everything within its rights and its policies and its strategies to achieve the missing link. And hopefully, before I finish in this place, we will have the link from Cambridge along the Tasman Highway to the mountain bike park, up across the cliffs, which is basically one of the best views of the western shore that I think anybody could imagine, then to, as I mentioned, to Caves Hill, Rocky Tom, and then into Riston Bay. I support the council's recommendation.
Yes, your wish, I'll be fairly brief. I get the recreational evidence that is associated with the officer's recommendations. There is some conjecture around the exact location. There is some conjecture around the exact location of the track here or there. I get it. But I won't be supporting it tonight. This matter, as a planning thing, is coming down to a strategy, and I have to weigh up that strategy versus other components, eminent domain, property rights, the most fundamental underpinning of western society. And as such, I won't be supporting much.
Other speakers. Alderman Carl.
We have already a precedent with the road visual, a very long, drawn-out application for public open space and the subdivision of a prominent visual landscape. Within the context of that land, before it even had its subdivision layout, what over top of it had a conservation covenant across the whole of the area. And during the phases of discussion on looking at public open space allocation, the natural areas were assessed, there was on-ground assessment of allocation of trails. And sometimes they actually got to be in the place where people wanted them and other times they didn't. However, within the overall structure of that discussion with the landowner, there was a fundamental belief between council and the landowner of the ongoing management and care of the natural environment. And that hopefully, that people being able to enjoy the natural environment actually leads to some long-term sustainable support and management. I believe that tracks and trails are a wonderful, council provides a wonderful strategy for the community to enjoy the natural environment plus enjoy their healthy wellbeing as well within that environment. So I support the officer's recommendation.
Motion before the Chair is the officer's recommendation for refusal. All those in favour? Against? Carry. Could we recall Alderman Douse, please? Item 11.3.3 is a subdivision application at 25 Seabrook Street, Seven Mile Beach for one lot subdivision and landfill. Alderman James.
Mr. Mayor, I have circulated a motion in relation to this matter, that the application be refused for the following reasons.
We have a second for refusal. Alderman Cusick, thank you. Alderman James.
Mr. Mayor, we had a speaker this evening who in fact went through a number of concerns that she has and also, I think indicated her neighbour has similar concerns in relation to this. I think you really have to go and visit the site to really appreciate what is actually happening here. For instance, the motion in two parts says that the proposal is contrary to clause E11.8.1B1B in that it cannot adequately provide for a building envelope able to accommodate the development that can satisfy the Waterway and Coastal Protection Code. On page 89 of our report, the, under the clause I've just mentioned, lot design, it's non-compliant. The building area nominated in Lot 1 would be partially subject to the Waterway and Coastal Protection Code and Inundation Prone Access Code. So in part two of the motion, the proposal is contrary to that E15.8.1D of the inundation-prone areas in that it will create a lot that will adversely affect the flood flow due to the proposed concentration of piped stormwater from the property to Acton Creek, which will impart on the surrounding properties. In actual fact, it was mentioned this evening that substantial earthworks have been done on the eastern side of the creek, and that has been built up, the earthworks to a degree that the runoff that has occurred over the past can no longer happen, and therefore there is no way in which the creek can basically overflow or water can dissipate successfully as it has done across those plains in the past. With the concentration of the earthworks that will occur at the property at 25 Seabrook Street, and I might add, Mr. Mayor, that those earthworks will be done, will be constructed at the rear of the property owners, one of which spoke this evening. So in actual fact, you're building a bank of earthworks on one side, and you've already got the earthworks on the eastern side of the creek. So in the case of any potential overflowing from the creek or from any other waters that may come in that direction, you're going to have that inundation occurring to those properties on the, on those, on that side of the earthworks which is on a lower level. In fairness to the person, the property owner who spoke this evening, this is only, these works will only compound the problem and therefore could, in fact, put at risk the property owner's property as far as inundation and water overflow to the lower side of those, of the creek. I seek council's support.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I support Alderman James's motion on principle. I visited the site on the weekend. I believe it's totally inappropriate for the subdivision. I've spoken to officers and they believe the grounds for refusing this may be a bit tenuous. However, looking at the site, I cannot support the subdivision as I believe it's inappropriate for that area.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I made my contribution, I just wanted to ask a question to Mr. Lovell through you. The comment in the associated report, under E11.7.1 Performance Criteria 1, refers to, sorry, it's E11.8.1 I want to be looking at. And the question is, what, there isn't any detail provided in terms of the assessment that the lab would be capable of a development that complies with the code E11.7.1. I'm just wondering how that assessment's done and how that conclusion's arrived at.
Stevens, are you able to answer that question?
So in clause E11.8.1, Performance Criterion 1B2, it's stated that the subdivision could accommodate a development that would satisfy the Waterway Coastal Protection Code. The question is, how was that assessment done and that conclusion reached?
The assessment was done through the JMG, which looked at...
referring to the assessment clause 15.8.1, which is to do with the flood flow. Page 99. Oh, sorry, page 100, the top of page 100. And it's on page 99 as well. The response is on page 99.
Perhaps you could nutshell the problem that rather than...
So I understand what Mr. Stevens is saying is that there isn't a risk of the development once the fill is provided, there isn't a risk of the development being inundated because of that solution, I understand it. So that is a, that is an expert assessment that's been done and also relying on the JMG report, which is done by qualified engineers. We have an assessment to show that there won't be any significant change in the flood flow as a result of that fill. Now, going to Alderman James's motion, unfortunately, I can't support it. I can appreciate the concerns of the representatives. I can appreciate that they would be anxious about this issue, but in making this assessment and looking at those particular clauses of the scheme, we do have to rely on expert advice. And I am very uncomfortable rejecting the expert advice that's provided by qualified engineers when we don't have an opposing qualified expert opinion. And that's, you know, that's what's lacking in supporting Alderman James's motion. I've said it before in relation to other developments, if there is expert opinion and we don't have opposing, opposing expert view, expert advice, we can't just, we can't just base our responses at planning authority on an armchair assessment. So I will be voting against Alderman James's motion supporting the recommendation.
I just need to point out that this application has been before the tribunal before and was actually refused based on only one condition. That condition in relation to stormwater has now been addressed. It makes it very difficult for this council to actually then put before what could go well back to a tribunal if we go against council's recommendation, and the tribunal will have no reason to actually go against our decision. So it makes it very difficult. There's a 25-page report given here which actually assures all of us that this is not a risk because of the area of the land of which any water will be dispersed is adequate to cope with. The risk of flooding is not going to necessarily increase. There is, there is some issues already existing there, but this subdivision won't actually, according to the report, make that situation anywhere.
Yes, I just wanted to back that final comment up. I would advise that representatives read the JMG report, which is part of this. It's the 26 pages of professional advice we were given, which some of us managed to comprehend, which is very difficult without those professionals agree. However, in the conclusion and recommendation, it states that, as Mr. Stevens was talking about, the risk of inundation for a 1% AEP is high, but it's the depth of inundation is small enough for the risk of damage to adjoining properties and risk to users of the site or adjoining land to be considered low. And rated with an H1, H2 hazard vulnerability classification in accordance with the Australian rainfall and runoff when the fill is provided on the site. So the joint probability analysis stated that even with the highest recorded sea level since 1960, a 1.35 metres gave a low hazard vulnerability classification for the development. And so therefore, I will be of recognition.
Okay.
We have a motion to refusal for us tonight, and on a visceral basis, I want to support it viscerally. It's a low-lying area, and to have further levels raised in that area is not something that naturally one would welcome. However, I can't, as a member of the Clarence Planning Authority, make decisions on a visceral basis. We've seen what happens with that with our good friends up around the Central Coast Council recently. So making this decision tonight, we have the extensive reports, we also have, if you like, one engineering opinion, there's the opinions of council officers as well stating the risk components, and this is something that I have to bear in mind, even though on a visceral basis I may be inclined to do something else. Just around this, because this is a subdivision application, not a DA with a particular dwelling, through you to probably Mr. Lovell, although it might be Mr. Stevens, the footprint for the, for the level of fill is about 390 square metres, is that right, Mr. Lovell?
Yes, the area of the fill is about that size.
And that's of a block that's about 1,300, I think, or something?
Correct.
Okay. And that's not, is that the footprint of the house or is that the footprint of the house plus the environmental requirements?
That's, that's all of this, this entire area of the fill.
So at some point in the future, when a DA comes before us, that is what we would be expecting, and something contrary to that would be, have to be rigorously re-examined by our officers?
The edge I'd like to use, an application to my house would be expected to be on the area of the fill, using the...
So in Phil Creek really isn't something that, is something we should be worrying at the moment. What we have before us is a subdivision with engineering reports, and I'm going to have to vote as mayor of the Clarence Planning Authority and not support the motion.
Alldem, Alderman James. Other speakers. Alderman Douse.
Mr. Mayor, I'm again with Alderman James, we have a business creek. Now, that's a rather narrow creek now, and it's quite curvy and all this stuff. Have we got any commitment here in that creek? Because I mean, if that gets blocked with, say, rubbish or leaves and trees or whatever, whatever, and then we have this increased runoff from the subdivision, plus a king tide all at once, we've got that perfect storm. I mean, have the experts... And have the experts who've done all this modelling, have you ever thought of those scenarios? These scenarios do occur. And if you've got a house there, although, you know, you might be in there for twenty-five years, you don't want to be subject to, you know, flooding. And you say, all right, one in twenty-five years, so what? Well, it's just your house. I mean, you're a big boy, really, aren't you? I just wanted to know, have the experts on very enough entered the consequences of this subdivision?
Stevens?
The creek is, the creek is, which we maintain, but there's an issue associated with the map of the creek, which is on Crown Land. We have to watch over the Crown Land Services every time to get permission to do work on that. But certainly, only six months ago, so...
I think the question was, has account been taken of a perfect storm? Where you can get a king tide and a blockage in the creek and heavy rain all at once?
I think the analysis by JMG puts out the creek being blocked as a map and the creek being scavenged out of the map. It didn't really take any consideration of the long story or stuff. It was just because of the flood.
Any other speakers? Alderman Chong?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Like Alderman Walker, I think that the temptation when you go and visit the property is to want to vote with your heart rather than necessarily as a planning item, and we all know that that's not necessarily a very good thing to do. I guess for me, the fact that the independent experts' report has come out very clearly saying that there is no significant difference in risk before the subdivision and after the subdivision, for me says that there's no way that on planning reasons, we can refuse this. So on that basis, I will not be supporting the alternative recommendation.
Other speakers, Alderman Pierce, I think?
Thank you, Mayor. Look, I went down with Alderman Dows and had a look at sixteen and eighteen, and like the other Aldermen said, I don't think we can refuse this. But look, Alderman Dows was quite right. We did have a look at that creek, and we said to ourselves, geez, there's a lot of rubbish in there, and we think it may be time to just go back and revisit that creek and just clear out some of the stuff. I mean, we saw lots of branches in there. You may want some of those, but I thought there was a lot there, and I'd be much happier because that was quite there. Because especially eighteen, I really, like, can understand their situation, but I don't think we can just play the lead bill and subdivision on that. I really think that creek's got something to do with it.
Thank you. Writer reply, Alderman James?
The question that was raised earlier with regard to the reason why it was refused some time back, and that was over the stormwater and over the wastewater system. The, at that time, there was no earthworks that had been done on the bank of the Toronto State. At that time, it was, obviously, the water could dissipate onto the flatlands or marshlands or whatever you call it in that basically direction. So at the time, the decision was made to refuse, the tribunal refused it on the basis that of the wastewater proposal. We have now moved on some time, and now we have a situation where there have been substantive earthworks done on the bank on the eastern side of the creek. Substantial earthworks which have actually changed the way in which the water is able to dissipate across the plains and be able to obviously not encroach upon the properties in question. In addition to that, and it's already been stated in the discussion so far, there is going to be a large area of infill, which will not only about the property at eighteen, but the adjoining property. So you've got this huge mass of earthworks that are going to be built up over three-hundred-and-ninety square metres, because that is where the wastewater system, that's where the building imprint will be. So you've got that large area, not just a small section of the embankment that's going to encroach, but you've got this large mass of earthworks that is going to sort of cause a barrier in relation to what may be a normal dissipation of water as it would have happened prior to those earthworks being installed. So you've got the low ground, you've got the high ground, and if there is any means by which water flow can move in any particular direction, it will go from the high ground to the low ground. And that, Mr. Mayor, is where this will happen. And you can talk about a flood in a hundred years, you just don't know these days. You have your experts who say, look, this is what's going to happen, but then nature has its own course of action. And so you just can't determine. But when there are factors that are going to cause problems, in my opinion, to existing and neighbouring properties because of major earthworks that have been constructed, then you are going to have problems.
Thank you, Alderman James. The motion is, before the chair, is a refusal. All those in favour? Against? The motion is lost, Alderman here.
I'll move the officer's recommendation.
Thank you. Seconded, Alderman McFarlane. You wish to speak to it, Alderman McFarlane? Do you wish to speak? Other speakers? I'll put the motion then. All those in favour? Against? Carried. Item eleven-point-three-point-four is a development application at one-hundred-and-fifteen, one-hundred-and-thirty-one Tempe Road, Yurson Bay for visitor accommodation and dwelling.
Can I just, sorry, can I just make a comment before, something moved?
Certainly.
There is a minor change to the recommendation that's been circulated there, and it's just a change in the wording of condition eight, recommending that the wording now read prior to commencement of works as seen from use.
Nine, is it? Recommendation nine?
Eight.
Nine.
Recommendation nine.
Oh, eight. Eight.
The right of way is eight.
Okay.
Yeah. That with a bit of a...
Sorry, works, sorry, not use, works.
Thank you. Alderman here?
Mayor, I move the amended recommendation.
Thank you very much. And seconded was Alderman Thurler, I think, yes.
Mr. Mayor, I think it's very important that we have more accommodation over this side of the river. I think Clarence City is a place with enormous potential in our visitor economy, and it's good to see that expanding. This is a development which I think not only shows a great deal of respect for the environment that's located in, but is actually, you know, uses that as a selling point, you know, the experience, the environment, the immersion, the environment, the design of buildings is even, you know, has aspects that mimic the environment with struts under the units that sort of mimic tree branches and, you know, something that the developer, I've met with the developer, has thought very carefully about and, you know, has very clear vision for the site. But of course, being a planning authority, we need to consider this from a planning point of view, and I see that it meets all the relevant performance criteria where it doesn't meet acceptable solutions, and I support the officer's recommendation.
I too visited the site, and I know that my first response was a bit of concern in relation to access. That has been addressed, and that problem is no longer a problem. So based on the officer's recommendation, this is a wonderful proposal. And what I love about this proposal is that the footprint is going to be very, very limited, and it's an example of ecotourism, which is used as a tool by local communities, and it's a direct reflection of the motivation of the developer to actually have the vision to introduce a project that involves mountain bike. And it's the perfect location and with access to the beautiful reserve next door. So it's a piece of nature, natural tourism, it's a recreational travel-based concept where international visitors will hopefully flock to this place and enjoy the natural environment that is there. But based on the fact that we have addressed the access issue, there doesn't seem to be, there is no impediment for this development to proceed. And I think it is a wonderful visionary exercise and will bring many tourists and many visitors to our eastern shore. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Look, I think this is a wonderful development. It's probably the development that's occurred in my time in this place, which has addressed a number of issues. Firstly, preservation of the sort of the environment, keeping intact the trees, the scrubbery, and making sort of a, on a par with nature, full stop. And so I believe that the developer has gone out of her way to address all those issues. But more importantly, what she has indicated, that there will be, hopefully, in the longer term, mountain bike riders to access and stay in the units on the property, because it's going to add additional accommodation to what's already has been approved as part of the main residence, and this will be additional to that. And just looking at the map, which I asked our tracks and trails planning officer to provide to me on Thursday, you can see on the map that all that in the red is council land, and a butting that is the developer's application. So in the longer term, and I mentioned it earlier when we were talking about the Burrell Bay and the other matter earlier in this evening, there is that opportunity, and I believe this council is in keeping with opening the access via Rocky Tom, Caves Hill. We already have an access or agreement with the quarry in Flagstaff Gully and also the Meand Range to the mountain bike park at Mollington. So this, in the long term, can be the driving force of not only providing access, there's still a long way to go, but also at the same time, providing accommodation for mountain bike riders or bushwalkers or people who love the environment to be able to stay in these units or these pods, if that's what they're called, and be able to enjoy the natural environment. So this is really a good project. It really is. It's got all hallmarks of ticking all the boxes, and I believe that once we give this the tick of approval, and I believe, Mr. Mayor, that we ought to give this the tick of approval, it ought to be carried unanimously, because this is, once in a time, in my view, a project which meets all those qualities and characteristics of an eco-development proposal. I think it's great. I look to the longer term, and when I get a bit more exercise and determination, then I hope Mayor and some of the others will join me, because I'd like to trek. I know it's a long hike from the mountain bike park. I think we can get through Caves Hill at the moment, you know, we can basically get through as a walking party. And then we may be able to...
You're wandering, Alderman James.
Yes, I know.
Keep on target, please.
I'm so excited about this project, Mr. Mayor, that's why I tend to...
Good to wrap up.
Well, I've still got the time.
Yeah, to wrap up.
Yeah, time to wrap up. So I seek council's support.
Thank you. Well wrapped up. Other speakers, Alderman Husey, and then Alderman Chong.
Yeah, Alderman, excellent proposal. Here you have, should raise yourself to such a development, we need to vote, was a potential impediment, but was that addressed or fully supported?
Thank you. I will also be supporting it. Sorted out the access issue, I think this is a very good development. I particularly like the fact that not only does it allow for the mountain bikers, the walkers, but there's actually some units there for people with a disability. So it's not only for those who are really physically active, but it's for everybody to enjoy the environment, I think, actually.
Other speakers, Alderman Pierce?
Um, yeah, I think the council, as you said, was talking about it, but I think this is a great development, just in the right spot, and that's what makes this, I do it.
Time nicely, Mr. Mayor. It's taken eight years, but, you know, finally, the department's team, we have signed up on the skyline, mountain bike track for the competition run. Good timing.
Other speakers? Writer reply, Alderman here? The motion for recommendation for approval, all those in favour? Carried unanimously. Item eleven-point-three-point-five is a development application at sixty-four Bridge Street, Richmond, with access over sixty-six Bridge Street, Richmond, demolition alterations to dwelling, extension to shop, new fence and carport. Alderman Campbell, thank you. Alderman Pierce, seconded, speakers? Alderman Pierce? Other speakers? I'll put the motion then, all those in favour? Carried unanimously, and that concludes our business as a planning authority. Nothing under customer service? Asset management? Yeah, okay, eleven-point-five-point-one, I was just waiting on Mr. Stevens, but I'll take Alderman McFarlane as a mover, and Alderman Chong as a seconder. Alderman McFarlane, would you like to speak to it?
Just that I'm totally impressed with the way the staff management plans are continuing to extend over time, and I recommend that the Alderman actually go for a walk along the Clarence Flakes Riddlet, because the amount of work done...
Sorry, the wrong general manager, I guess.
What are you talking about?
I'm sorry. Would you please continue?
Oh, no, I've finished it.
Thank you. Alderman Chong?
Don't need to add anything, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Other speakers?
Writer reply?
Thank you.
I really wanted to go and have a look at the mulberry trees along the Clarence Flakes Riddlet. They came from the pioneers that first settled the area, and the council staff have managed them so that they still bloom, and if you really want to eat mulberries, you better get down there before the locals walk into you.
Motion then is that we authorize the general manager to undertake community Motion then is that we authorize the general manager to undertake community consultation, all those in favour. Carried unanimously. 11.5.2 is the Cambridge master plan. The recommendation is we dropped at the draft as a final. Alderman Chong, thank you. Second, Alderman again. Alderman Chong, would you like to speak to it?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This plan has been a long time in the legislation, so four years since we very first started talking about it. Had an impressive journey along the way with a whole raft of issues which are listed in the report. So I won't go through them that have been considered along the way. Over the course of this proposal coming together, there has been significant consultation with some of the strategic shareholders, particularly for the draft plan, went out for consultation in April 2016. One thing I would like to mention, as the deputation mentioned earlier, about some extra time for the Department of Education. And we certainly gave the Department of Education an extra four months to reply. So when it was closed, a public consultation, the department actually got a longer period to be able to give us their reply. And I think that's important, because it suggests that they have actually had sufficient time to do consultation, both within the department and amongst the school community. I guess it's important that we say why I personally don't believe that we should be supporting the Department of Education's plan. Some of that goes back to when we first started talking in Cambridge to around the Football Federation proposal for the Cambridge Oval. And the community feedback that we got at that point was very forceful, that that oval was given to council for the community to use in its current sense, that it was a war memorial oval and that the community were very, very against anything happening that would detract from that oval and its use. I also felt in looking at the Department of Education's proposal that there was a suggestion that the war memorial itself be relocated. That's quite recently been put there and a lot of community thought and money went into that. And I think there would be a big backlash on the community if we were suggesting that that would be moved. Obviously, not everybody will like everything in this master plan. And when we get round to actually putting it into place, which will not be tomorrow, because a lot of it is dependent on the Department of State growth actually building the Cambridge bike park, it won't look exactly like it does at the moment, in the same way that, you know, 10-year plans never look quite the same. This won't look exactly the same when we put the works in on the road. Of course it won't. Things will change inevitably as we try and do so. But I think what this gives us is the vision for Cambridge. It's the idea of what we and the majority of people who responded to the Cambridge master plan when it went out for consultation, it's what they want for the area as well. I think it gives us that capacity to do things in a much more holistic view and I think council support.
Um, it's important to understand that in supporting the officer's recommendation, we're not at the stage where we're finalising this master plan and immediately putting it into action, which means that there, you know, my understanding, if I've got this correct, is that there are still, you know, options for refinement of the plan, which means that we're still open to discussing with the school, you know, possible plans for future expansion. The question really is about their proposal to expand to the east. And my understanding from the report provided is that there is a legal impediment to do that. So that even if council wanted... Obviously, the arguments that Alderman Chong has put forward about, you know, the needs of the community in terms of those facilities that already exist there and the cost of altering and moving those and the access to the community to those facilities, that there is that, there is actually that legal impediment in terms of the use that's required of that land by its original owners. And I think we need to understand that that doesn't entirely restrict options for future expansion of the school. There is the option of expansion to the north. There is a natural barrier created by the ribulet and I can understand the school's concern that that may provide some separation. But I think that there are engineering solutions to that. I think that that separation can be overcome in a way that allows for a continuous campus. It's interesting, I, when I first moved to Tasmania, I actually went to a school that had two separate campuses that were separated a long way down the road. But that didn't provide an impediment to that school operating holistically and having a smooth transition, you know, from the early grades through to the later grades where the different campuses were located. But we're not even talking about that separation. We're talking about across the ribulet, which I think, you know, you can provide reasonable access over there for students to move between, you know, the north and south of the campus. So I don't, I don't accept that saying the school won't expand to the east into the area occupied by those sports facilities is saying that there are no future viable options for the school's expansion. I can appreciate the school community's views on this and that they are anxious about the school's future. But I, but I think that, you know, there are still viable options rather than...
Look, upfront, I'm not going to endorse the master plan tonight. I'm not going to make an alternative on the fly. And I'm not stating that we should automatically hand over sway as the oval. If the majority are of the same mind not to support, then I foreshadow a motion to defer consideration so as to allow sufficient time to further liaise with the education department. That could include a joint workshop with council to discuss the challenges and options facing the school and try and positively walk towards a solution. Cambridge is part of our municipality and it has a long history. And it's an area undergoing rapid change. And much of that change is stimulated by residential growth. And each new dwelling built in Cambridge has been approved either by us as a council sitting or by delegated officers. Now, throughout its history in Cambridge, the primary school really has probably been the centre of that area. And even with the growth, it still remains the anchor of the activity. As the speaker noted tonight, it's an area that people move to, move into to get their kids at the school. And I'm a champion of school choice and I can say that's probably sad for many parents that are out of the area that because of the growth and the, you know, the, it's basically an in-area-only school now, because... And that has to be ruthlessly enforced. And that's because there's such a strong demand for people wanting to go to that school. It really is a credit to the school. The school has outgrown its present infrastructure and this plan does nothing to facilitate a resolution of the dilemma. In fact, I think it's pretty reasonable to argue that it just adds to the pressure. And I've been in council for nearly five years and you see a bit over that time. You know, you can become hardened to rent seekers, to cost shifters, particularly state government instrumentalities. And in relation to the school, in a strict division of responsibility, dealing with the challenge, that is the education department's problem, not us, technically. Except that it isn't, because every single pupil enrolled in recent times is a Clarence resident from a Clarence family. So we have a role and responsibility to work with the department. I do believe, as I said, that deferral is the best way forward. And if that was to occur, we could strengthen a proactive engagement with the department, maybe have them in for a workshop and just try to see what options there are. I don't, on my heart of hearts, think that we have really worked through with this issue with the department as best as we could. And I think we've got an opportunity to really improve on that. So I won't be supporting it. And if the majority agree with me tonight, then we should defer it.
Other speakers, Alderman James.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The question that has actually been put to us is that the matter be deferred. And I think that is the best way to go in the circumstances. The, uh, the communication that we have had from the Department of Education and signed by Todd Williams, he has made it clear that at a meeting, it was agreed that the department would undertake a school-based master exercise with the Cambridge Primary School and the School Association to consider three options for possible future expansion. And they are option one, as we know, utilise Clarence council property. Two, expand over Burrell Ribulet. Three, new construction on a green field site. And in their conclusion, as the department has said, that all options have been fully assessed and option one being identified as the preferred option by all parties. And I might add that the association is very concerned about if this goes ahead. It, I believe that there needs to be more time to discuss it. I think a deferral is appropriate. And let's face it, we did it some years ago when the Football Federation and was being involved. And also too, there was a question about who can utilise the, what basic support or otherwise was for the use of the Cambridge Oval for its entirety usage, I suppose you could say, by the Football Federation. And that was a public meeting and a number of us on council at the time were there. But it was quite clear that the Cambridge Oval was to be excised. And we don't know how much was to be excised from the actual use of other parties. And there was a lively debate at the time. I think we need to be able to go down the deferral line, because at the strength of this, council has always signaled that it wants to enter into memorandum of understanding. And we've done it with the Clarence High School over the oval. We've done it and worked in conjunction with the Rose Bay High School with their students and their projects that have come to council for funding, because we believe that the school is a very, very important part of our system. And it's so important that Clarence takes credit for any activities that sort of puts the city of Clarence up there in lights because of a particular school's activity and how it's been able to identify with Clarence residents and obviously provide kudos that this council readily takes on board. So why can't we do the same with the Cambridge Primary School? Why are we saying, no, they do not need to expand onto council land? Even though I believe it's one of the key primary schools, or even on a standing that probably outpace or is greater than some of the other schools with their activities and their integration in the community? Why can't we decide to defer this and go out to consultation? Because as the mover of the motion said a few moments ago, at that time, it was quite clear that this is what we wanted to do with the Cambridge Oval. But this is different. This has changed things. The school now is very much involved in the community. It's up there as part and parcel of the, uh, the community development that we expect from a number of activities and also from the school. So why can't we, why can't we discuss with them and take on board their concerns? And try to identify, even if it's a small part of the oval, for expansion and also to, to consider the impact that the truck along the boundary, close to the little kindergarten or preschool children, is of a concern and a risk to the, to the, to the school as it would, as it should have there. But we're not. We're saying no, quite clearly in the recommendation,
Thank you, Alderman James.
that this is what we're going to course of action.
Thank you. Alderman Perry, I think you were next.
For you, Mr. Mayor, I saw the article in the paper today, School Fears Plan May Curve Growth. But I felt the heading was misleading, because there is no plan to curb growth. There is just, as the Cambridge plan has indicated, the idea that the Cambridge Oval has to be kept in its entirety for the community. And this is a prime example of where council has to consider everybody, not just one aspect of the community. And I worked at council for 10 years and I know exactly what happened with Cambridge Oval and the fact that it has always caused a few issues because it's in the middle of a school. But that is what has always been and that has to be dealt with. Now, Alderman James has suggested we defer. We defer because four months wasn't long enough. Wasn't long enough for the education department to actually come up with some alternative. Because when I went down to that school and I met, I think the idea of any other alternative than encroaching onto the oval was the only option that everybody wanted to consider. So why is it that council has to concede to the education department in this instance? Four months, is that a long time? Is that enough? Or do we want to, we want to defer it again? As the mover of the motion has indicated, this is not set in concrete. It just means that the whole process can actually get going. And deferring is succumbing to the fact that we have to stand up. If we believed as a council that that oval was left to the community, who are we to actually go against that? That is, that is not respecting history and it's not respecting what that oval was given to that community for. And if the education department can't respect it, we as a council have to. And I know there are other options to expanding. There's going up, there's going out in a different direction. There's a new greenfield stuff. But the education department doesn't want to necessarily put any money into any of this. It wants to put the onus on council.
Eight point five million.
Don't interrupt, please. You've had your turn and now another Alderman has a call.
Thank you, Alderman James. You've stopped my momentum now. That was good, good tactic. So what I'm, what I'm saying is this project may have some money from the education department going towards this, but it won't be adequate to actually see this whole thing come to fruition. I think there is a case, yes, for conciliation and for more discussion. But it's not necessarily up to this council to actually surrender. And we have to stick to our guns. We know that there are other stakeholders that we need to look after as well. And, and that's the consideration. This oval is very much a part of other people's recreational needs. And it's also very much a part of the Cambridge school's recreational needs as well. So I don't believe in deferring.
Alderman Cusick, then Alderman Doss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with Alderman Walker. Like, having listened to Truall and having made tonight's, I'm even more unsettled and bear about this. There appears to be two significant issues as relates to Cambridge, to the Cambridge Primary School. One, the walking track, Burrell Ribulet, and the use of the oval. There are a number of schools I can think of where, where there is reasonably easy public access to school grounds. Places like Howar Primary, where you've got a path along behind the beach, Lindisong North, Digestary, probably plenty of others. Of course, child safety is paramount, but it seems a mutually accepted solution could be found. And I would have thought that in a primary school environment, particularly younger primary, that whenever the children are on a break in the playground, they'll be very closely supervised. That, my understanding is, that there's always schoolyard supervision. Allied to that, I think the public probably already have access to the oval. And the second issue is the oval itself. It's effectively held in trust by the council. There would need to be more inquiry as the council's... There would need to be more inquiry as the council's right to adopt the schools or Department of Education proposal. Also, of course, as has been mentioned, there are other users to consider, Southern Cricket Association, Sena Idens and some soccer bodies. There was also suggestion that the change rooms be relocated, but from the proposed lives, then there was no funding coming forward for that. Of course, this is a very vibrant school, but it need, but needs to fit with other community needs and considerations. I think we need more time to, to go back and have some more discussion about this and the, and the various options that might be available.
Alderman Dous.
Mr. Mayor, the land was granted by the Maxwell's when the school was in existence for a long time. Mr. Maxwell would have been aware that the school was there and the adjacencies of the land he was dating, but he wasn't donating it to the Department of Education, he was donating it to the community. And that was his specific provision. That's what he wanted. If he wanted to give it to the school, he would have, he had the opportunity because the school was there at the time. And I think, you know, going over, as it says here in pages two, three, six, item six, the proposals by the Department of Education are contrary to the express provisions under which the land was granted for the Cambridge Memorial Oval. Now, it's not just an Oval and that's not land given, it is a war memorial. Now, I think there are certain political risks, I've been vibing with anti-episims, I didn't give them enough time, but the federal government is in charge of war memorials. Now, you just can't walk in, I hope, in my imagination anyway, and just take over a war memorial, whether it's a centre park or an Oval. You must got the classification of a war memorial, there are significant legal responsibilities on the community for that. And I can't see that we can just ignore that. So I support the option.
Thank you, Mayor. I totally agree with what Alderman Thury said. Now, like Alderman Thury, I've come and asked Ian Priest and the General Manager, we are waiting on the Department of Education, when's their submission coming in? I don't know how many times I've asked that question. And you're quite right, Mayor, four months after, you know, it's supposed to be in. We gave them plenty of time and I agree with Alderman Thury. We're not stopping the school from building. We're not stopping them going this way up, whatever way they want. What we're trying to do is, as Alderman Dous, as I'm a history committee, said, it's a war memorial, the park they want to take over, they want to build. Now, Alderman James is right, they gave us three alternatives. One was to relocate the Oval and that was eight million. Two was to build a whole new school, 21 million. They never said they had the money to do it. I don't know if they expected council to do, to put this money in or not, because I'll tell you now, I'm pretty sure that I'm not going to support it. Now, the fact is, as Alderman Chong said with the master pen, we've been working very well for this to get out. And things are not going to move quickly as Alderman Chong quite rightly said. I'm quite happy to discuss, discuss the park. If the school's a bit shaky on the park, yeah, all right, we'll discuss that, that's fine, I don't know issue with that. But to think that, you know, all of a sudden, we, the Education Department, they've got their submission, they've told us what they want and we don't agree with it, I'm afraid. And I think just delaying, delaying things is absolutely just a waste of time in this, in this environment. We've given them enough time and I think we should just get on with it, it's going to be a slow process, so let's pass this tonight.
Alderman Thury.
I agree. I think that we should adopt this management plan tonight. In the past, when we've talked with other schools, particularly Vertby High, Claretley is a good example of the amount of time it takes for discussion to finally ratify a agreed outcome. I don't think that we don't want to support the school, we do. The school is prominent in, in usage and I think their long-term viability, that needs a lot more discussion than we can take on with this plan. Also, therefore, for us as the council, we need to look at the long-term strategy for that whole valley and I would like to see a local area plan to go with that. But as this is the one we have on the table tonight, we should start from here and expand our discussions out to accommodate the concerns that have come forward.
Alderman Campbell.
Yes, well, I've watched the Education Department action around the council for over 40 years now, so, and they're notorious for getting in brunt and I could quote dozens of examples where they've run them up and that not having affected in my time, super was construction of some 16 odd schools around the state. And the other thing that has happened is the expansion to the airport. Now, this has happened not only in this state, all around Australia, all around the world. And this is what the so-called experts and planners and that should have been taken into account and we probably wouldn't have had this dilemma on our hands now because they would have recognised that and made provision for suitable, another suitable site for school. It's unfortunate, it's a great school, it's done a tremendous community service today and it's a pity they can't expand within the confines that it's got. But the time has come, I think, and the Education Department, they do their figures, they come to the conclusion, they do need, need another greenfield site, whether it's 21 million or not, I'll take my estimate hat off for a while, so I couldn't contradict that. So it's one of those things, so I think that the council should adopt the plan and it's always open discussion, it is a master plan after all. It's not the be end of all man, it's there to be considered, considered into the future and if sound arguments can be brought forward for necessary amendments, it can be done. It's not clocking stone.
Alderman Thury, write a reply.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess predominantly I would say that the master plan is not just about the school, which many of the discussions have been about, it's about the community and it's about the whole area of the community and we need to take the whole community into account, not just one. The other thing I would say, that a number of the people who talks about currying on the basis that there hasn't been enough time for discussion, there is nothing in adopting this master plan tonight that says we cannot continue discussions with the Department of Education. Doesn't say we will necessarily turn around and agree with them that they want to take some of the Oval, but there's nothing to say that we can't continue to have discussions about how we might construct, if you work together, particularly in the, in the track at the back, if that's obviously a problem too. At the end of the day, I think we've worked four years as a council, particularly as the officers talking to people, to try and pull together a master plan for this area. Really seek council support and get, in voting on it tonight so that we can have a plan for the future.
So the motion for the chair is the officer's recommendation, all those in favour? Against? The motion is carried. Financial management, there's nothing to report. Eleven point seven governance, eleven point seven point one, concerns less facility.
Can you read that?
Thank you. Alderman Thury, second to Alderman Chong, I'll take. Alderman Thury, do you wish to speak to it?
When's the open drink?
Turn me.
Sorry. Can't wait for it to open, it's been wonderful.
Alderman Chong, do you wish to speak to it?
No, no, I don't like that either.
Alderman Thury.
With point C, now the kiosk is on, the kiosk facility on an annual licence basis, right? So even though the club comes in after a year, say in winter and say it's a soccer side, will that kiosk licence be split what they want, if the soccer side wants it for six months in this season? License be split? We're not giving alternative, we're not just giving them halfway. Maybe I should talk to John.
Talk to your microphone, is that the best way of talking to John?
John, the kiosk facility annual licence will initially start with the cricket club, but in, say, winter, a soccer club comes and wants to run the kiosk in the winter period, would that licence then be split fifty fifty? I would imagine if another club came in, because it's not the top half, it's a kiosk down the bottom, I'd imagine it could be split. Next part of the question is, I don't know if we'll do a reference to this or not, has the centre been actually given over lock, stock and barrel?
Sorry, can I ask what you mean by lock, stock and barrel?
Well, it's just said been advertised as a puncture room bar and I just saw it advertised today.
But they've certainly been granted occupancy for the upper level and to use the lower level, to use the facility as anticipated. It hasn't been formally handed over to them by way of lease or anything like that, they're just on a basically a, a rental approach at the moment because the building works and the, and the ground aren't finished and only partial occupancy of the building's been granted at this point in time. So it's not all finalized, but they do have access of it and upstairs level, they are looking to, I know they're advertising and looking to lease it because that's their facility.
Yes, that's my question, they're already advertising for weddings and whatever and they really haven't got complete occupancy of it yet.
No, but that's only a matter of a couple of days away.
Any other speakers? Write a reply.
There was a reason for wanting drinks, really. I think this is going to be wonderful and it's going to add so well to the whole of the Kangaroo Bay environment and I look forward to some more innovative ideas coming out of the plan when, when we look at putting in further applications for DAs. But it was really lovely to see the younger, younger people down there using the ground today and I suppose for me, I'm really looking forward to the ground floor being open and specifically targeting the toilet.
Thank you. The officer's recommendation, all those in favour? Carried unanimously, thank you. And seventeen point two, council delegations under the Building Act. Alderman Campbell, second to Alderman Chong, any discussion? All those in favour? Carried unanimously. Seventeen, eleven seven three, community safety plan. Will you drop? Alderman Chong, second to Alderman Thury.
Just said, Mr. Mayor, we've discussed it several times in workshops, it's been our community consultation, only feedback, only positive feedback received.
Other speakers?
I would only like to say that this is another outcome from the Community Health and Wellbeing Committee, A D led by Alderman Heather Chong and Deputy myself. So it's, it's a great outcome, there's been some really good outcomes coming out of that committee.
Others? Put the motion, all those in favour? Carried unanimously. Eleven point seven point four, revised schedule for building plumbing and planning fees. Alderman Cusick, thank you. Alderman Chong. Just any speakers? Put the motion, all those in favour? Carried unanimously. Eleven point seven point five, maintenance of nature strips and urges that we adopt the policy. Alderman Thury, thank you, second up. Alderman McFarlane. Any speakers? In the absence of any speakers, I'll put the motion in the Alderman's recommendation, the officer's recommendation to the Alderman, carried unanimously, thank you. Island twelve, Alderman's question time, there are no matters on notice, questions without notice, Alderman Thury.
Thank you, Mayor. The Kilmarnock Bay Childcare Centre, I'm on the committee there, has council got any plans for this to be upgraded?
Upgraded?
Yes, upgraded.
Sorry, the Kilmarnock Bay Childcare Centre.
Playgroup.
It's a playgroup.
The playgroup next.
The must park run down next.
Does it need to be upgraded? I'm sorry, I had to take it on notice, not that I'm aware of.
Put this place in, I was going to get the order down here, but apparently nobody would. Could this be included on the last tour at the moment? General Manager?
Certainly.
If you do, go there.
Alderman Dous.
Um, Mr. Mayor, maintenance scripts of earth we just passed, it says none of nature strips will not be undertaken by the council. Now, you have a whole lot of nature strips, there's people say it's mine, it's the council and it's that brown, brown, brown and it's a fire hazard, there's a possibility that it's the council or the person whose nature strip is ours only.
Ultimately, when it gets to that point, it's our responsibility to clear it as a fire hazard, but I don't think many residential, um, 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 nature strips would be assessed as a fire hazard under the, under the guidelines that the fire assessing officers use. But in rural areas, yes, but in residential areas, I'd be, I think you'd be hard pressed to argue that it's a fire hazard because of the clearance around the general.
Therefore, if a nature strip becomes a wilderness like the Morning Roundabout, eh, what do we do about it?
The Morning Roundabout's not a nature strip.
Yeah, but then we actually, um...
The answer is, it's maintained by... No, no. As we have previously, we tell DIR that we're unhappy with it and they'll eventually...
Not everybody's happy.
But the nature strip outside a person's house to say it in nine to four years, what do you do? Just say, never mind. You don't worry, it's ignored.
If it's a fire hazard, it gets abated. Alderman Cusick, Alderman here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two questions. The first one's a Dora Kixer, because I know we've discussed this issue. But Business East applied for funding under the state government's Business Enterprise Centers Programme and unfortunately they were unsuccessful and I understand they've had a meeting with you and although I know the answer just for the benefit of the other Alderman and the thousands of people who'll be watching the, the video proceedings, what, what options have you discussed with them?
Well, there's only been discussion and I understand there's been a board meeting which you attended, but I am now suggesting to the President of Business East that he write the council advising that he wishes to undertake a strategic planning session and that council will consider some assistance in that regard if we get the letter. But there've been no commitments beyond that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Of course, any future commitments will be a matter for council, but I, I think it would be really great to see that organisation continue because they really have it. And along the business community.
This is the second question.
Sorry, the second question, also Dora Kixer, because I've discussed it with you and the General Manager, but I would like to know what the progress is of discussions with Parks and Wildlife, or I understand it might have been with the Minister and his advisers, about council becoming a management authority for the Kangaroo Bluff Battery.
General Manager?
Through Mr. Mayor. The last actual dialogue I had with the Minister's Department, oh, the Minister's Office was probably three months ago now and during the course of last week I have tried, and sorry, haven't had any response beyond that. I did chase up the matter again with the Minister's Office last week and it was advised that they'd get back to me by last Friday, but as of yet, I still haven't had a response from them as to where the matter's at. I understand the, indirectly, the officer that was dealing with it is...
I understand indirectly that the officer that was dealing with it has left, and they're still trying to ascertain where the matter is being dealt with and who by, but I will continue to follow what I put in.
Keep another motion from Alderman Walker. Alderman Chong.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Would it be possible to get an update on where we are in relation with some foster care and rights?
Through, through, Mr. Mayor, yes, there's been a, Stephen will correct me if I get, sorry. There has been a Directions hearing, which we were represented, not Bosh, because it was only a directions hearing, and the agreement was that there's four, four or five councils, four, four, five? Five councils involved, how in them? Yeah, no, it's all right, it's on the record. There's five councils involved, the matter is, was, went to mediation before the magistrate, he's directed all parties to put in written submissions in support of their position, and he'll set a date for the hearing in due course. No, there's five councils.
Five councils.
Alderman McFarland.
I just would like an update on last year's budget allocation for Claretvale with the renewal of the internal public open space and the line.
Through, Mr. Mayor, I'll just take that one on notice and provide a response.
Break the briefing report, yep. Alderman Dous.
I would just like to ask Mr. Stevens how successful the Hardways Collection was this year.
How far?
To use that, Mayor, it really depends on a... The issue is, it's certainly finished reasonably on time, there was two days, we had two days to clean up, which finished in the last, which is the first week of...
I take it there'll be a formal report? Thanks, Mayor.
Just another question, which has just been prompted, Alderman here. The home, the future home for the historical society that currently shares in the Vori Community Arts Building, is there any prospect, because we did that plan where we were showing the cultural aid base, and we always think in terms of where we're going to house some of these because they're our little crabs. So I just wondered if there's any, anything in the wind as far as new homes for...
There's nothing in the pipeline at the moment, we're still working through it.
But the comments that are coming from the floor indicate that there's some action going on in relation to property.
There's a briefing note coming out to the Alderman, we were advised by the managing agents, Edwards Windsor, last, at Thursday, that Bunnings weren't selling the property that they were looking to lease it, and Edwards Windsor are actively looking for tenants now.
They can't lease it, that's fine, but Henry Jackson's moving into the...
Let's get a bit of structure in this meeting. I just thought we'd throw that in.
Thank you, it's obviously prompted some further discussion.
Sorry, I just may be interrupting.
That's all right, I've been interrupting.
What about the old Russian children? Leasing to the... Alderman Walker.
Yes, thank you, and it's through you to the General Manager, and yes, I do have this in as an Alderman's request, but I'm wondering if you can give me a sneak preview on any possible timelines to restore the state of the BMX track in Gailston Bay?
Sorry, I can't give you an answer now, but I will make sure you, I'm aware that that's been in for a couple of weeks, I will make sure that you get a response this week, thank you.
Alderman James.
Thank you very much, two questions. Stevens, has it been circulated to Alderman yet, the footpath programme remedial works for sixteen seventeen? Has it been circulated yet? Do we know what suburbs have been identified for footpath renewal works?
You've been doing footpath programmes, of course, there's a detail there about the public works, and the settlement they're going to be done, and I speculate that through the briefing report, which is...
And second question is...
In relation to footpaths, but the, Mr. Gorrings has run me, and I actually received an Alderman's request back, this is through you to Stevens. I received Alderman's request to say that a number of streets that had been identified or put paths in those streets from Lauderdale would be done within six weeks of May two thousand and sixteen. Would you be able to provide an answer in relation to that, please, Mr. Stevens? When works will be done on that Alderman's request, which is dated May two thousand and sixteen?
Okay, thank you, so item thirteen, closed meeting. Alderman Dous, thanks, Alderman Chong, all those in favour?